Should be the Education Neighborhoods Committee, a special meeting. February 19th, 1:30. Councilman Zine. And we're waiting the arrival of my colleague, Chairperson Alarcon, and Ms. Hanga. So we have, on the regular agenda, four items, and on the special, we have...
Two.
We have two. A total of six. Six items. That was a special meeting. The whole meeting's a special meeting.
Yes.
It's a special day.
Special day.
Okay, well, let's do a special number one.
Item number one is oral presentation by the City Ethics Commission relative to the filing of the Form 700 disclosure statements by neighborhood councils.
And we have one, two, four public speakers on this matter. So tell us who you are, and we can begin.
Good afternoon. I'm Heather Holt with the Ethics Commission. I'm the Director of Policy and Legislation there. The Ethics Commission did consider this issue at its meeting last Tuesday on February 12th. And in light of the council's motion, adoption of a motion that would require disclosure, financial disclosure, on the part of neighborhood council members, the Ethics Commission endorsed that particular view and supports the council's desire for some form of financial disclosure among neighborhood council members. However, during its discussions, the Commission did identify several concerns that it has with the Form 700 in particular. Most notably is the fact that... Most notable is the fact that the Administrative Code currently exempts neighborhood council members from having to create conflict of interest codes or file Form 700. And that's a one-time exemption. So once that's eliminated, it can never be reinstated. It will be filing Form 700 in perpetuity if that's what the council decides to do.
Today, we're joined by my distinguished colleague, Janice Kayhan.
Thank you. Another one of the concerns that the Commission expressed is that if neighborhood council members are required to file Form 700, then that qualifies them as a city official under the definition of our governmental ethics ordinance and subjects them to some stricter conflict of interest laws than they're currently subject to under state law.
Just because of filling out the form?
Yes.
Because of the strings attached to that 700 form?
Yes, exactly. And so, in light of the fact that the creating of neighborhood council files is a two-year pilot project, the Commission felt like taking those two permanent steps at this point was inadvisable before the pilot project has concluded. The Commission also considered some other policy considerations and came to the conclusion that the authority to create a neighborhood council file doesn't create decision-making authority for neighborhood councils. The Commission's opinion is that it doesn't create significantly more authority than they have now, and it doesn't create a significant risk of inappropriate influence over city policy. So in light of all of those things, the Commission concluded that the Form 700 level of disclosure was too broad and disproportionate to the advisory role that the neighborhood councils fill. However, the Commission is in favor of transparent government and acknowledges the council's position that some form of disclosure is appropriate. And so the Commission is recommending, or is in the process of, creating a form, an alternate city-generated form, that would be another form of financial disclosure. And at this point, the Commission would like for that form to require neighborhood council members to disclose their employers, their real estate interests in the city, their business interests in the city, and to formally memorialize any conflicts of interest related to a particular council file that they have created. So in other words, if there's a gift associated with someone who has an interest in a neighborhood council file, that would need to be disclosed. If there are no conflicts of interest, the form would require the neighborhood council member to certify that there aren't any additional conflicts that the member is aware of.
So if a developer were to be involved in a development project, and were to invite the neighborhood council folks from that particular neighborhood to Staples, to his suite for the Elton John concert, that would be a conflict?
Yes, it could be.
But they have to report that?
Exactly. That would need to be disclosed, yes, on the form.
But they could go, though.
I am saying yes unless the city attorney's office has some reason why they wouldn't say...
That's a question because...
What was the question?
Gwynn Pointe, ex-city attorney. Just to clarify, we also have Renee Stottle here, who's our public integrity...
Renee, she's just jumping up and... Come on. You don't have to sit back there and shake your head, though. You come up here and put it on the record.
The issue is, the exceptions of the gift may or may not necessarily be a conflict. That would be part of the analysis that our office would assist the neighborhood council with.
Well, the question was, a developer, and then they want to woo the neighborhood council, so come to my Staples suite and watch the Elton John concert and enjoy the evening. And there's no influence direct, but obviously, there's indirect influence.
Yes, and while it might or might not be a conflict...
Kind of are not what they like, Elton John.
The city attorney's office would make the determination of whether it was an actual conflict, but it would be something that the Commission would feel would be appropriate to be disclosed. Even if it doesn't rise to the level of an actual conflict, it could create the appearance of a conflict.
See, that's the concern about neighborhood councils. Since the folks don't get paid, they're doing it out of love for the community. And then a developer... I'll use another example, Playa Vista, where they want to bring folks down and woo them into supporting whatever endeavor they're involved with. And then the neighborhood council, hey, this is nice, let's go do this, because we're nice community people. They're not getting paid. And that way, the neighborhood council is kind of getting led down the path, which they're not aware of the consequences, and they haven't been informed or educated to it, and all of a sudden, there's a big newspaper...
So follow that through. If they... If that neighborhood council were to introduce a council file relating in any way to Playa Vista, what would this disclosure look like? And how would the council be able to process that?
Currently, the Commission is considering a two-page form, and on the front, it would be all of the standard stuff, employer, real estate interests, business interests. On the back would be space for the neighborhood council members to disclose that very thing. So if there is a neighborhood council file that relates to a particular issue in which they have some sort of financial interest, whether it's gifts or tickets to a concert or dinner from Playa Vista, that would be the place that it would be disclosed.
Is that a one-time form that they fill out in the beginning?
Do they fill out...
Well...
They have to fill out.
Yes, see, it seems to me, have you thought about creating... I know. Have you thought about creating another form that's not part of the original friendly 700, but becomes something that can be filed alongside of the council file?
Yes, and that's exactly what the Commission is proposing. Instead of following the Form 700 annual filing schedule, it would be filed every time that neighborhood council...
That same...
...admits a neighborhood council file.
Okay. So it would go along... They can only submit so many files?
Correct. I think it's a limit of three, yes.
Three. So three times, I see. So three times, they would do that same form?
That's right.
Front and back?
That's right.
I see.
Everyone on the neighborhood council would have to fill out a form if they're submitting...
Yes.
Every... Yeah. Have you... Did you think about the idea of bifurcating that, though, and maybe doing a one-time for the Board of Directors or the Board, the friendly 700? And then, when they introduced a council file, whoever might have that, or all of them, or some of them, could then... Because they had them all refill that out three times. I don't know.
It could... The Commission didn't consider that specifically, but that's certainly an option to think about.
Yeah.
Renee?
I just wanted to clarify for you. If the neighborhood council board members report having received gifts, obviously not with an intent to influence their action, because that's otherwise prohibited...
Just out of their act of kindness.
That's right. Even if a gift is disclosed, as you all know, just because a gift is disclosed doesn't mean that you have a conflict of interest that precludes you from voting.
Right.
If you receive a sufficient amount of gifts, it can result in a conflict, and you may be required to recuse yourself from voting.
Yeah, what kind of consequences for the neighborhood council people?
The neighborhood council people are already subject to the Political Reform Act and already are required to recuse themselves if they've received gifts of $390 in a calendar year from someone who has an interest in a matter before them.
And if they don't, the consequences?
The consequences are that they can be fined or prosecuted.
Yeah.
That will really help the neighborhood council participation.
I mean, I would be really interested in you kind of creating this friendly conflict of interest form, that when the neighborhood council decides to file their council file, you know, the president of the council has to ask, on this particular issue, does anyone have a conflict? And then, you know, I would think we would have to, like, maybe list, for instance, you know, check in the box if you've gone on a tour of this facility, or you've received... You know, and just kind of help them understand that, in regards to this particular council file that you're introducing on this matter, does anyone who currently sits on the board have one of these 25 potential... And then it would be easy for us to look at it. I think for us to, three times a year, for every council file, go through even your friendly Form 700, not necessarily gets me where I would like to get in terms of holding them accountable.
How many neighborhood council...
Let me have a thought.
How many neighborhood council members are there, citywide?
I believe there's approximately 1,800.
Out of the 1,800, how many have taken ethics training?
That is an excellent question.
About 600.
600.
So that means a whole lot of people don't know the law, or the rules.
Or they haven't been trained on it.
We're going to lay more rules and laws and possible incarceration.
Well, they're already under that one, the incarceration one.
The prisons are full, though. We're starting to release people.
Yeah. Rafe wants to come up and say something.
Well, it's okay, you come up. But the concern I have with this is, we seem to be making it more complicated, more complex, more difficult, when the neighborhood councils are supposed to be...
That's why...
...the spirit of the community.
Right.
And every time we get involved in it, it seems to be more cumbersome.
Actually, we're trying to make it more friendly. I mean, I was the one that introduced the first issue where we got rid of the Form 700 for neighborhood councils, and then it has surprisingly gotten back.
Because of this issue?
Yeah. But, I mean, and I think we're getting involved now, along with the Ethics Commission, to try to make it a friendlier process. While still getting the information and still holding everybody accountable in city government, why not make it a little more friendly?
Rafe Sunshine, Executive Director, Neighborhood Council Review Commission. I do have my beard on today.
I know, it looks good.
Just wanted to let you know that.
I was noticing when I walked in.
Okay, I figured it was going to come up, so I thought I would preempt it. I would just like to remind everybody that the initial recommendation by the NCRC was simply to have neighborhood councils be able to introduce council files, and this committee made what we thought was a very good proposal to...
And that was just introduced, that was it? Well, no complications?
With no... Now, and I've read the Ethics Commission report, which seems to be very, very thoughtfully done.
Yes.
But I still want to point out that the issue of elevating the council file to such a tremendous thing to where it's different from any other action any neighborhood council takes implies that this is a decision-making thing, which the Ethics Commission staff, I think, has very clearly pointed out, it is not decision-making. To elevate this in this way, still, I think, is going to create a lot of disincentives to participation. And one question, for example, is, what if you were a neighborhood council board member who did not want to file a council file and wanted to vote against that measure? Would you be required to fill out forms that you can say that you didn't want to do something that would require you to fill out the forms? Seems a little bit Alice in Wonderland quality to me. But I've been struck, ever since the council debate, by the fact that there's a good point in all of this, which is the necessity to strengthen the conflict of interest disclosure requirements. And of the two parts of the report that the Ethics Commission proposes, I think the second one does a better job of saying, relevant to this decision, do you have any conflict at this time? And to require people to make a general disclosure of employers, real estate interests, business interests for themselves, and their spouses or domestic partners, for only this one item of all the activities of neighborhood councils, either is going to open the door to doing it for everything, which I think is going to be very onerous, or it again elevates council files to being the single most important activity a neighborhood council will ever do, which, it may be important to others, but I think it's not of that huge significance. But I do think, in the long run, it would be good to have a systematic way of asking people before they vote, do you have any conflicts of the following? And going along with Councilmember Zine's point, this needs to be communicated to neighborhood councils that they're covered by these conflict of interest laws and what that means. And I think getting into a big thing about big forms of all of your financial interests is going to get in the way of communicating that. It's the second part of the Ethics Commission form we need to communicate, which is, you cannot vote without disclosing a potential conflict of interest. So we may get something good out of this debate, which is a better way of getting disclosure at the moment of a decision, whether it's council file or anything else. I think, from our Commission's standpoint, wouldn't be any difference between that and a community impact statement, in terms of, if you're going to speak against a development and you have a vested interest in some way, we probably ought to know that.
And we're now joined by our Chair, Councilwoman Rashida Alarcon. DeDe.
Yeah, thank you. I apologize for being late, and thank you very much for starting the meeting without me. This is an interesting issue. The way I look at it, we've done such incredible work to build a very strong relationship, I think, an improved relationship with the neighborhood council system. I'd hate to see it undermined by one action. And I don't think anybody is trying to avoid the issue of the ethics concerns, but frankly, there hasn't been a problem. And so what problem are we trying to fix here? I just don't get it. So that's the position I'm coming from. At the same time, can we craft something that might be better than the proposals that have been presented, that would not be so onerous, would not create... More than the issue of neighborhood council members walking away, I think they would be disgruntled and create disharmony with the council. They would... Because I don't think the proposal, the 700 form, is all that onerous, having filled it out for many, many years. And so... But I am concerned that we're just creating the them-and-us mentality, and that's exactly what we were trying to avoid with the review commission's work. So I understand... I wasn't here... Did the Ethics Commission present?
Yes.
And I wasn't here for your presentation about your specific proposal. There's some alternative form that you wanted to talk about.
Yes, the Ethics Commission is in the process of creating and considering an alternative form that would require less disclosure than the Form 700 requires. Essentially, the basics would be your employer, your real estate interests, your business interests in the city, and then, if you have any conflicts that are specifically tied to a particular neighborhood council file, those would need to be disclosed as well. So the example was, if you received a gift from a developer who is the subject of a neighborhood council file, that would need to be disclosed.
Was the recommendation that it be specifically for those neighborhood councils who introduce motions, or for all neighborhood council members?
Well, based on the council's motion, the Commission has considered it in terms of just councils that are involved in seconding, introducing or seconding a council file.
Would there be anything that would negate the extension of it to all neighborhood council members?
That could certainly be... That could certainly be done as well.
The second issue...
I agree with you. Yeah.
I mean, I just don't see why we would discriminate between groups that introduce council files and those that don't. I think, if we're going to have disclosure at the neighborhood council level, it should be equal.
Yeah, and then it's the second part.
Right.
I was saying, why not have a kind of a second conflict of interest form, that before they introduced a council file, they would have to disclose whether or not, on this particular council file, like if it was about Playa Vista, they would... Does anyone on the board have, you know, a conflict? Did you get a gift? Were you invited for a day at Playa Vista? You know, whatever. So... Because you're right, the first half of it, I think you're right. That doesn't really necessarily get us where we want to go. It's when they introduce the council file, then I think people were... A few people on the council were nervous about that somehow this council file would come terribly influenced and, you know, conspiracy...
Now, the other issue that the city attorney mentioned to me was the concern about the requirement that the Ethics Commission determine whether or not there was a conflict. And that is not a role that they have with the council member.
That's correct. The city has about 6,000 Form 700 filers, and the Ethics Commission serves as a repository for those forms and provides public access to the information in them, but does not actively conduct conflicts checks for any filer.
Who... Does anybody do that?
No.
Well, why do we deposit them?
So that the public has access to the information and can act as a watchdog on government. And also, it's a tool, actually, for the filers themselves, to flag something that might be of concern to them. When an agenda item comes up, they'll know that they have reported something related to that item on the Form 700. And it encourages them to contact the city attorney's office to double-check whether it is an actual conflict.
So then, your suggestion would be that this so-called Form 52 would be... It would also be... The Ethics Commission could be the repository for it?
Yes, absolutely.
But not the sort of enforcer? And I would think that the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment would be in a position to sort of check if there are problems with a particular... Or even BONC would be in a position to check on a particular issue.
I think the city attorney's office might be better equipped to respond regarding conflicts because of the complexities of the laws.
Right, and our unit is set up to do just that. We have a team of lawyers, and they're there, they're assigned to various neighborhood councils, and Done basically lets the neighborhood councils know that we are here to answer your questions and to advise you on a particular issue as to whether or not they can participate or not.
So if there's a perception of any kind of conflict, then they go to the city attorney and you'll investigate?
Correct.
But you're not going to, for instance, we're not going to go check these friendly Form 700s when a particular neighborhood council introduces a council file to see whether or not it would... It's self-disclosure.
Yes.
But on the same token, if those...
If someone had a problem.
If that neighborhood council had a question about conflicts affecting that council file, they could call our office as well, and we could evaluate and advise, but...
I also didn't ask Mr. Sunshine what the review commission contemplated with regard to ethics scrutiny.
We had not made major recommendations, except that neighborhood councils should be fully aware of ethics laws, which clearly has not yet been... All that information hasn't been brought out. It's a huge number of people. On this matter...
Well, if, in fact, the 700 form is used with council members and other electors in the city realm and across the state as a reminder, why wouldn't we give the neighborhood council members that level of opportunity?
Well...
See, I see this entirely different than... Some people see this as an imposition of something onerous that doesn't need to be there, and you should just trust us. I see it as sort of a way to remind them on a consistent basis of their ethics responsibility.
Our... We did talk about Form 700 in our commission and pretty much agreed with the city's decision to exempt the neighborhood councils, because it provides a lot of information that really isn't relevant to their work as neighborhood council members. What's really relevant to their work as a board member is the item that's in front of them, that they're voting on. And are they working for a developer? Are they working for a labor union that has an interest in the case? That's really what we need to know. We're pretty certain that, with the difficulty of reaching all 1,800 members, which we found in our own work, was really an onerous matter, that if you create a mandate that has to be done, you're going to spend most of your time tracking people down. It's going to be miserable work, and you'll find you haven't tracked down most of the people. A lot of people... So you're creating a lot of people out of compliance for information which would be more relevant for a council member or others. We also think a lot of people...
Isn't there a penalty for not filing it on time?
Yeah. And we also think that...
It's a monetary penalty, isn't it?
And we also thought that small business owners and others are going to be reluctant to go into all of their business interests and put them out there, simply for the purposes of being a volunteer member of a neighborhood council board. I think a lot of people would just simply not do it.
Right. And one of the concerns, I heard from some neighborhood council folks, again, they're volunteers. At the end of their day, you know, all they want to do is kind of make their neighborhood better, and a lot of them were uncomfortable with revealing... Again, it's not... It's more than just a reminder. It becomes public knowledge, and it's, you know, it's retrievable by really anyone. And they were uncomfortable with things like... Some people told me, you know what, I'm... My neighbors don't really know that... Who my clients are as a lawyer, and once I tell them who my clients are, they're going to know, like, quote, what kind of a lawyer I am. I don't know. And just things that, again, they felt uncomfortable, you know, they're...
That's not my concern.
They know they're neighbors, and, you know, it was something that they didn't feel like that's what they should be required to reveal, again, just to try to improve their community. So those were the kind of things. Or finance... A lot of people said, my neighbors have no idea what my financial, you know, status is, and I like it that way. And there's just kind of things that you were... We were making people put out there publicly. Again, we're in a different life. I mean, we've chosen this life. Our lives are open books. And I don't think that's what we ever intended for people who got involved in neighborhood councils to have that kind of an open-book life like we are. We're... We've chosen that. They, again, really want to just make their community a better place to live, so...
I don't think...
Those kinds of things were problematic.
I don't think that's my concern, because I think, once you step into the public arena as an advocate and leader, whether it's neighborhood council member or other, I think there is a level of public disclosure that is appropriate. The question is, what is that level? I mean, this city has a long history, a very colorful history of ethics concerns, and that's why we have some of the strongest ethics laws in the nation and instigated laws throughout the nation.
Yeah, but they're advisory.
So I... The problem with ethics is sort of a nose of the dramaturg. You don't want to... You don't want to have unethical practices creep into the system. You want to head them off as quickly as possible. In this case, so I think the 700 form may be overly onerous. On the other hand, I think we should have some level of scrutiny, just to make sure neighborhood council members don't find themselves in a situation where we're creeping down the wrong path and letting the press have a field day with somebody's mistake in one of our communities. But I don't want to belabor this discussion. We do have a motion that was introduced last week that will be referred to this committee... Was referred to this committee today that is on this subject. I'd like to sort of join those discussions. I'm not in a position... I wanted to hear this and see the Ethics Commission's work, recommendations before submitting an alternative. I would like to hear from Mr. Zine on this, if he has strong...
I spoke for your right.
But the bottom line is, I don't know whether he has strong feelings about the 700 form or whether he feels that...
I think an alternate form is fine, and I support the Ethics Commission in that review of another form. I think that the more complicated we make, the fewer people want to be part of neighborhood council, and that's my concern, is that we start losing people. And there is a turnover in neighborhood councils. People are up for election, and they leave, they come back. If you're talking about 1,800 at this particular time, that's a lot of paper to be generated and to keep track of and to keep files of, and all the different projects that are going on with... If it's downtown, the 9th District, with LA Live, all the development, the neighborhood council, Playa Vista, my district, I got a huge West Hill project. So the neighborhoods all get involved, and the more cumbersome it is, the less people want to participate. And then down in San Pedro, they're doing a lot of projects down there. And these people want to have a nice community, and they want to participate, and we're asking them to do that with no compensation or consideration. But then, we labor them with all these other issues. And then Janice has a valid point, where you don't want your neighbor to know what you do. People want to keep their lives private, and there's nothing wrong with that. So we just encroach upon their privacy, and sometimes we take advantage of their giving to the community to try and make it better. And again, both of us are charter commissioners. We never envisioned any of this being part of it. We just envisioned neighborhood councils being like homeowner groups. Sherman Oaks Homeowner Group's been in business for many, many years. They do very successful. They don't have any funding from the city. They do a great job, and they represent the community. We have all these other homeowner groups that are around. We put government in, and it becomes a very complicated, confusing situation with all these rules and regulations, which is not what we envisioned when we started the charter commission.
Which is my... Well, which is why, again, the concern, I think, from a lot of people came with this introduction of council files. And while you say it's not the biggest thing that they're doing, you're right, it's just one of the many things they do. But that's where the concern came in, which is why I would feel okay with this conflict of interest form as it's attached to a council file. Again, I'm almost more interested in that form than even your first page, where Real real estate holdings and, you know, that just is not, that's not, I don't think what we need to get at. I think what we need to get at is, the only thing that's changed in this scenario is the introduction of council files. So that's what is giving some people some angst. So if you, I would like to ask if Ethics and Dunn, obviously with input from neighborhood councils, can it create this conflict of interest, local conflict of interest form that's attached to a council file? And that is, I think, would, you know, serve me when I'm making decisions better than really knowing all of their real estate holdings and who their employer is, and, you know, that's not really necessary, I don't think.
I do want to move forward with the public comment period, but I do have to express a concern regarding this notion that they only serve as volunteers, they're not compensated. The ethics problems that historically have emerged are really related to something that's related to, something that gained you money, but it's not necessarily compensation. So for example, where we are typically exempt and recuse ourselves from a decision that's 150 feet from our house, are neighborhood council members aware that if they're making a decision on the basis of something that's next door to them, it could be a violation if it would generate an increase in their assets? And that's where the compensation issue is really, that is the real concern. It's not the salary, it's not the, you know, no, it's the decisions that they will impact on. So if there's, if they're, if the neighborhood council members are not recusing, and I suspect they're not, recusing themselves on issues that are directly affecting the value of their property when they should be. And so...
Okay, but you're the one that makes the final decision, not them. They're not making decisions.
No, no, no.
But they're still subject to those very rules. And I would have to argue at this stage of the game, they are aware of the rules because there are lots of materials that are out there now. They have a training, a legal training manual that I have to say my division created that sets forth all these rules. We have given in-person training to neighborhood councils.
Does it sound like a lawyer created it? I'm just kidding, Glenn.
Well, it does have some legalese in it.
Is there a file who's been trained?
I'm sorry, is there?
Is there a file on who's been trained and the rules?
Yes. Dunn keeps track of those records as well.
And you got, you got 600 trained out of 1,800. There's a lot of people complete ignorance.
How many people recuse themselves?
The materials available.
We got one. But, yeah, so I'm, okay, so there are some who understand the rules, but I have to believe that there are a lot of members who just, council members, neighborhood council members who just don't have a full grasp, even though they've gone through the training, because the things that people get, get caught on with regard to ethics are usually very complicated, very subtle, and even those who are experienced are surprised. And so, so I think that we need this to protect themselves. I mean, and because, because I just think that it will be, become a problem down the road. Anyway, we'll have more discussion about it. I'd like to take public comment at this point. Thank you very much. Veronica Perez Becker?
Veronica Perez Becker from the Central City Association. As neighborhood councils transition from advisory to legislate, legislation-creating bodies, it is important to hold them to a higher standard of disclosure and ethics. Hence, we support the city council's decision reached after lengthy debate to require Form 700s for neighborhood councils who choose to create council files. The purpose of disclosure is to protect the public trust. Accordingly, it extends to key players in the legislative process beyond city council members, including council deputies, deputy city attorneys, and other city staff. So it is not just for the decision makers. Given this new power, neighborhood councils will now have a role in the legislative process that even city staff does not have and that other private citizens certainly do not have. With this power comes responsibility. This requirement should not deter participation since only neighborhood councils choosing to exercise the power to create council files will be subject to disclosure. Finally, the city law exempting neighborhood, oh, excuse me. Perhaps we disagree on whether this change would be advisory or legislative, but until this thing plays itself out, don't you think we should err on the side of protecting the public trust? If the city council ultimately changes direction and elects to require a city-created form, we believe that such a form should reach the level of disclosure required by Form 700 in order to ensure transparency and at a minimum have them list gifts that they've received over a certain amount. As mentioned by the Ethics Commission deputy earlier, this can also serve as a tool for the person, it might, it might flag a conflict that they didn't even realize by listing gifts. They might say, "Oh, you know, I didn't realize that is connected." So it serves, you know, that purpose also. Thank you.
James Hubach?
I'm speaking for myself, but I am an alternate board member for the Glissell Park Neighborhood Council. I have followed the events of the last couple of weeks, and I think that the committee needs to decide, is this an issue of ethics? Is this an issue of procedure that relates to opening council files, or is this an issue of open government? The sense I got was that the original motion was an open government issue. They did not want open government. They wanted to punitively require an extra step for someone who would deign to take advantage of their rights under the city charter. If it's an ethics issue, I have no disagreement. Let all 1,800 file the city form. I like the city form, it wasn't bad at all. Not all members may choose to remain because of some of the conflicts they don't want to disclose, but that's not my problem as a board member. And by the way, boards do discuss conflicts of interest and are aware of conflicts of interest of their, of their peer group. This is not something that is just up to an individual. And Mr. Zian, I am one of the 600.
Good for you.
Why you're here? You don't want to go to jail.
And I would just draw a parallel, that by requiring a filing of some sort of disclosure form each time that a neighborhood council were, to decide to open a file, would be a parallel to asking you to file a form each time you vote.
Hmm.
Thank you.
I have a question regarding the training. You've been trained.
I did the online training. It takes four hours, by the way. It's not easy.
Did you find it valuable?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I didn't know they had online training too.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Dee Wiseman?
So all commissioners, all commissioners, fill out forms. Thank you, Mr. Sherman, members of the committee. Daniel Wiseman, I'm in several councils, but I'm going to speak as an individual today. Right now, I'm a board member of two. I've been a board member of three, but your neighborhood council is concerned with every council in the city, that's 90 of them. I'd like to take some issues with the previous speakers. The lady from the Central City, I think misquoted several issues. This is, we are not legislative bodies, I think the Ethics Commission has clearly stated that. And what we're really talking about here is the concern for what really are we? And frankly, that subject has never been well and definitively resolved. That needs not only the Ethics Commission, it needs the council, it needs all of neighborhood councils to come together sometime, some way, and get that straight. We are a city entity, that is clear. But we're not legislators. Now, there wasn't lengthy debate on this issue. This issue was brought before the city council, and essentially no neighborhood councils knew it was going to come up until Mr. Smith brought it up.
I agree.
If it's a valid concern, fine, it needs to be vetted in a much more thorough and a much more complete way. The, I don't want this issue to keep coming up and whipping us for every time we have any concerns about conflicts of interest. Many activists in the neighborhood council have substantial financial positions, and they may indeed, from time to time, come into conflict with those issues. I have on one occasion, I think you heard several other members in the audience say so, okay, fine. Let us have a singular form so that we can declare enough without being invasive of our private involvements, so that this can cover when we have an issue for a school that's going to be built in our neighborhood, when we have this issue and for others. And my final comment, and thank you for letting me run over a moment, as usual, let's remand this back to the Ethics Commission because I think we have more ethics to be considered. The Ethics Commission has done a substantial job already, but I don't think the job is done, and I'd like to see neighborhood councils participate with ethics with your 15 members to get this thing more better, more adequately covered and resolved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wiseman. For clarification purposes, two questions come to mind. First of all, there's nothing to remand back to the Ethics Commission because it was approved by the city council. The question is whether or not it is operable. And it's my understanding that it is inoperable because we have conflicting policy that says that neighborhood councils will not fill out a 700 form, and this motion did not expressly eliminate that policy, so...
That's correct. That's our position currently.
So it is, the motion that was passed in the city council is inoperable. So I don't think the Ethics Commission is going to be reaching out to anybody for 700 forms on the neighborhood council system. However, there was a motion that was introduced last week that would clean that up and make it the policy. The other thing I wanted to clarify is that the argument on the council, not my argument, but the people that introduced this motion, was that by introducing neighborhood council files, it becomes a legislative function. So the Ethics Commission has not weighed in on that subject.
I thought they did.
Yes, they have.
Did they, when I wasn't here?
They said that's not a legislative.
So you're saying it's still even, just by introducing the motion, it's not?
Yeah.
Okay, so that clarifies it for me.
That was my favorite part about the...
And that's been always the city attorney's position, that this doesn't convert their essential advisory role.
Okay.
Okay, so we have city attorney and city ethics saying this does not make them a legislative body. And, and what? And CRC. So all of you who keep saying that...
I think even the neighborhood councils will say that.
Yeah, okay.
It's not accurate.
Good, that's...
So quit saying it.
That's why I wanted clarification. Okay, thank you. The next, the next speaker is Brendan Huffman.
It's not making them part of a legislative body.
Good afternoon, council members and new dads.
I'll scratch that from your remarks if you have anything in there about them being a legislative body.
Thank you very much for your comment.
In public comment, you're, we're not going to, we're not going to respect you from making your public comment.
The highest offices in the city have spoken.
Okay, next time Elton John's in town.
I don't even want to know what that means.
You didn't get the sweets that, you know, neighborhood council got.
I'll tell you later. Brendan Huffman at VICA, Valley Industry and Commerce Association. I appreciate the opportunity to have, to have this discussion with you. Some of my comments have already been communicated to you by other speakers. I think, you know, if I had to choose between Form 52 and 700s, we would prefer the 700s. But it appears to be a discussion that you want to kind of maybe, not split the difference, but establish some type, some type of disclosure without going as far as the 700s as a spouse of a city employee who does not work for a council office.
Let me just clarify, I don't think the issue is the 700 form, and I could be wrong, but this is my interpretation. The problem is not so much the 700 form as the requirement that the Ethics Commission be responsible to, to track for compliance. What exactly does the motion direct them to do?
It's complicated. It's twofold, actually. Part of it is the Form 700 because of the current city ordinance that exempts neighborhood councils from having to file the form. And also, from what I understand from Ethics Commission, it's the responsibilities that would, the Ethics Commission would be charged with, would be evaluated, conflict of interest, that would not be part of their function.
Which they've never done before. That was a real problem. The, the other issue you raised is the, actually the third issue that's emerged, and that only emerged after the Ethics Commission reported back.
Right. And I asked for them to kind of a, kind of a local conflict of interest form that would be attached to the council file.
Right, right. That's why I never read a prepared statement. I listen, I listen to proceedings and comment as the issues change a little bit. And anyway, yeah, I'm married to a city employee who has to file us a 700, and I think it is invasive that my stock portfolio is public knowledge, I did not choose to work for the city. And I can understand why some neighborhood council members would feel that way, too. I don't think we need to know all that information about them. However, I think some information, in the spirit of open government, is very appropriate. I've spent a lot of time at neighborhood council meetings on both sides of Mulholland, and I think these issues come up, but they're not disclosed, especially when it comes to rental property and where people live. I also want to point out that Form 52 doesn't disclose everything. And here are a couple ideas that you may want to consider if you're moving the direction of a new form, such as the candidacy of neighborhood council members. In my neighborhood, I've seen a lot of lawn signs over the years. Someone's paying for those lawn signs, I don't know who it is. Some people rent a bus and bring all their friends in, we don't know exactly where they live, but I think that should be disclosed. And another thing I think should be disclosed is if any council office or city agency has a restraining order against any neighborhood council members. I think that changes the dynamic of a neighborhood council meeting, especially when neighborhood, I'm sorry, city council members and their staffs are very involved with the public policy being addressed. Anyway, I'm not going to get into, we could probably spend the rest of the afternoon arguing over what's advisory and what is, what is advocacy, so I'm just going to leave it at that and thank you for listening.
We're going to come back to this discussion. And actually, if you have any information, please get it to our offices.
Okay, I'll follow up with your staff. Thank you.
I think, I think there's a tweener here.
I do, too. I'm curious to know, though, I'm curious, I thought we already had some kind of a campaign disclosure. Do we, when people run for city council and, like I said, you see lawn signs or the slates that are mailed out, is there, do we have some...
He's talking about neighborhood council members.
I know, that's what I'm talking about.
Is there any disclosure on campaign...
There are none right now.
Not related to neighborhood council elections.
Okay.
Because they're not legislators. Can't have it both ways, Brendan.
Why not? Thank you.
Okay, Leonard Schaefer?
There should be.
Schaefer, I'm sorry.
I don't know if this got made a motion or not. I keep saying it. Good afternoon, members of the committee, and I'm glad that everybody is now agreeing with what I said at the city council hearing that that is, we are not legislative. So there you go. Little history, please.
Are we going to vote on this?
No.
Or not? Oh, because it's...
A little history on the Form 700. Originally, a number of us got together with Teresa Stamos and Valerie Flores, two fine members of the city attorney's office, and they were able to find a way to exempt neighborhood council members from the filing, but not from the consequences. And that's where this originally began. Looking back at this Form 52, which I just happen to have a copy of, a sample, there's a couple of things and a couple of problems. I don't have a real problem with disclosure. I filled out the Form 700. My wife, when she was a city attorney, filled out the Form 700. But here's what's going to happen, unfortunately. It talks about sources of income. We have small business people. Will the jeweler wish to disclose the $25,000 ring that he sold to a neighbor? Would the neighbor want that? If I represent a client as an attorney who says, "No, no, you cannot..."
Especially if her husband wasn't the one that...
There you go. If, if, if I represent, that has happened.
Desperate housewives.
There you go.
I'm just saying.
What happens to our real estate agents? What happens to myself as an attorney when my client says to me, "No, you may not disclose my identity"? How do I say I received X number of thousands of dollars from somebody I can't disclose? I have only one choice, walk away from the neighborhood council, this type of thing. This is more onerous than the, you're laughing.
Because I, any lawyer that would have a client probably has reporting requirements to the city...
Absolutely not.
No?
No. Absolutely not. I am an attorney, I do not, if my client does not wish to be disclosed, I have no duty to disclose him.
But what is in the 700 forms, you don't have, do you have to, you only have to disclose clients that are related to city business, correct?
No.
No?
Sources of income.
The Ethics Commission...
Oh, all sources of income.
Sources of income, and loans, and loans. Does that mean a lot? This seems to go somewhat beyond what the 700. Here, that's, your problem is, your problem is that many, many people involved in the neighborhood council are small business people, or they're individuals, they don't have corporations. If they're employed, that's one thing. But they're getting money from people not only within the neighborhood council, but all over the city. If I introduce a CF, that may have citywide consequences. How wide is the net that I must throw in order to disclose my sources of income? Gifts, I can understand. If somebody comes and gives me a gift, they give me tickets to go see the SC UCLA game... If somebody comes and gives me a gift, they give me tickets to go see the SC UCLA game and then talk to me about something, that's something different, totally different. And that's what concerns me very much about disclosing these things is because I know there are members of our neighborhood council who will walk away. And to answer your question, councilman, our rules, our specific rules that we have drawn up, if you're within 500 feet, the official notification distance of a land use, you walk out. If you're employed by somebody who's a developer's representative and it involves that, you walk out. And we've had people get up and walk out of committee meetings. One last question, and I'll leave. What about our stakeholder, non-board member, committee members who sit on our land use committees and such? If we introduce a CF, are they bound to do the same because they might be influencing somebody with regards to suggested legislation on land use and such? And that's a problem that I look at. And, and I'd like, I'd like really a lot of thought to go into that type of thing. I think an instance by instance where the question is asked, "Do you have an interest, financial or otherwise?", that's really fair. That's really fair. General disclosure, I think that's a problem.
Yeah. I'm on his side.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to move on.
Did you want to have yours?
Actually, this is public comment. I really didn't want to go backwards. We're gonna have, we're gonna continue this discussion.
So, we're not gonna do anything on this item?
No, we're not gonna do anything on this item. It really wasn't an item, it was just a report. So, I wasn't going to introduce it emotionally.
But when I said, "If you can come up with this form", you were gonna do that.
The only thing I would like to, I'd like to express to the city clerk that when we bring the item forward, we'll have this, this, the, we'll have this discussion again, and at that point, hopefully, we'll have some alternative to consider. Okay, thank you. Okay, I'd like to move on with item number two.
Item number two is the city attorney, city attorney report and draft ordinances relative to amending the Los Angeles Administrative Code to authorize the city clerk to administer neighborhood council elections and to make other neighborhood council election-related changes, a resolution amending the plan for a citywide system of neighborhood councils, and a motion to repeal the old neighborhood council elections procedures. On December 18, 2007, the city attorney was instructed to prepare and present the appropriate neighborhood council plan and ordinance amendments as necessary. As requested, the office of the city attorney has prepared and transmitted for your consideration two draft ordinances, a resolution for adoption by city council.
And you took it away from me. Thank you. Yes, what you have before you are the two ordinances, the motion, the, to repeal the old election procedures and a, and a resolution to amend the plan. So, what we basically have are, are a city clerk transfer ordinance. That ordinance literally transferred the responsibilities from Dunn over to the city clerk. That ordinance will be now, would be housed into the administrative code if it's adopted. And then we have what we called, for lack of other terminology, the election-related ordinance, and those, that's basically the ordinance that puts forth in the administrative code, the neighborhood council-related recommendations that were adopted by the city council, and we put that also in ordinance format, and then prepared the corresponding plan amendments as well as the resolution to amend the plan. In addition, we have a motion to repeal the old election procedures, but that motion wouldn't take effect until January 1 of 2009 because during, if you recall, the city council proposed a, an election transition period where some neighborhood councils could opt to have Dunn conduct their elections under the old rules. So, we needed to have the election procedures still remain in effect during this 2008 timeframe.
Do you have any questions?
Move the item.
The item's been moved. Are there any public comment cards on this item?
Mr. Weisman?
Item number two.
Transferring the authority from the individual neighborhood councils to the city clerk's office was recommended and highly touted by Mr. Son, Dr. Sonnenstein and others. It is still meeting with tremendous resistance in the community. It is a very serious thing to take authority away from the neighborhood councils and give them, give it to the city clerk. It is one other step in this problem of clearly defining the role, responsibilities of the neighborhood council, and having respect for their ability to do their job. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McQuiston? Item two?
Sometime ago, about, I think, three years ago, Valerie of the city attorney's office came in and said, "You know, we may have taken the wrong fork when we got up these And at the time, I said, "Yes, you certainly did." I have just glanced at this process, this, these ordinances, so I'm not fully prepared to comment on them in detail. But I have seen a problem. We have a constitution which says that we have a First Amendment and a Fourth, Tenth Amendment. And what we've done is we've taken First Amendment groups and we've said, "You are not equal, and we are going to control your speech." And I think we are going overboard. Now, just this morning in The Times, there was an article by a judge from Back East who is on CNN, I believe, and he was discussing the government, the federal government's takeover of our Fourth Amendment rights actually intruding into our privacy. And I think probably I could substitute the First Amendment for the Fourth Amendment and substitute the federal government, substitute in the Los Angeles city government, and the whole article would make sense. He said, "If we take away things one by one, when do we stop?" And that's what we're doing with this. What we really should do is say, "Hey, maybe we did take the wrong fork. Let's back up." Certainly, council member Zine has put it very, very succinctly when he said, "We didn't think we were going to do this when we got up this part of the charter." And I think sooner or later, someone is going to go into federal court and say, "Hey, look, this is absolutely wrong." And the federal judge is gonna say, "You are absolutely right." And then people are going to get very, very mad at the city, and we don't want to do that. This is supposed to make people think that the city is great, and it is. And the more we start more or less throttling our activists by trying to suppress something that they're doing, we're going the wrong way. We've gone down the wrong fork.
You are talking about item number two.
I'm talking about this item. The election process is really a violation of our freedom of speech.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Schaefer?
Now, he's automated.
Uh-oh. This looks...
I try and be green and not burn too many trees. With regards to the ordinance proposed by the city attorney on the elections, I have one major problem, and it's Section 2036 Sub 2.
Go ahead.
Okay. The NCRC recommended that common rules be built upon the 2005 ordinance, which are the citywide election procedures. I understand from an email response that I got from Frank Martinez that the city attorney has opined that there is so much in those election procedures, and there are so many different references, that it would be very, very difficult to, to amend them and change them and such. So, they've actually recommended doing away with them. However, I disagree with giving to the city clerk the right to promulgate election procedures, rules, and regulations, and issue any directives, et cetera. This should be a process that is entered into by the clerk's office, the neighborhood councils, and the policy-setting organization, which is the BONC. As much as I like Frank Martinez, and as much as he is interested in neighborhood councils, he is retiring, and I don't know who's going to be there next. The NCRC said in Number 53 that each neighborhood council election should stand alone based on its own bylaws. At meetings that have been held with the clerk's office, it's been reported to me that they have said, "You will have write-in candidates. You will have self-affirmation. There are neighborhood councils whose bylaws do not provide for that." The neighborhood, the NCRC gave that option to the various neighborhood councils. We should not be taking that away from them. We should have the development of procedures be an open and public process and not a private, and I hate to say it, dictatorial-type process.
Does the city attorney have any comment regarding?
Well, I, I do. I mean, basically, we drafted this pursuant to the instructions of the city council, and that was the language that's came out of the city council action, authorized the office of the city clerk to promulgate election rules and regulations and issue the directives, et cetera, because it was felt that the city clerk needed that broad authority to determine what the election rules are going to be. I think the underlying assumption, however, based on the dialogue that occurred, was that the city clerk would be issuing election rules based upon the old election procedures. So, it's not like the city clerk is going to be starting from scratch. That was the dialogue and the discussion that occurred. But quite frankly, the election procedures that are in place right now are going to be irrelevant in some respects because the whole dynamics are changing. The election procedures, first of all, refer to the Dunn being the administrator, and we have independent election administrators that are going to be running the elections, and that's not going to be the case under the new system.
Karen Cullinan with the city clerk's office. That's correct. The, the new election procedures will be based on the old ones, so we're not gonna be tossing those out entirely. They'll be consistent with the actions that have been taken, and, and we're gonna use that as the basis for, for what we're gonna be moving ahead with. There are gonna be some, some things that have to change because the election procedures, you know, involve what Dunn does now and so forth. There are a couple of other things that were mentioned, vote by mail and write-in. One of the, one of the goals of the NCRC was to have as broad a participation in the processes as possible. So, that was one, is part of the thinking in, in offering vote by mail to all the neighborhood council elections. The voter would be able to opt in or out of that, but it would be offered to everybody. And then the same with the, with the write-in candidates, but that's also something that'll be a procedure for. It'll, they'll, they'll have to do the same things that any other candidate would do, and so on, so...
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Zine moved this item forward specifically, what is being moved is as follows: approve the office's city attorney's report and following, and the following recommendations. Number one, adopt the ordinance amending the Los Angeles Administrative Code to authorize the city clerk to conduct neighborhood council elections. Two, adopt the ordinance amending various provisions of the Los Angeles Administrative Code relating to neighborhood council election. Number three, adopt the resolution to amend the citywide system of neighborhood councils' plan. And number four, adopt the motion repealing effective January 1, 2009, the neighborhood council election procedures adopted by council on January 25, 2005. With that, I support that, and...
Could I just ask a very brief question or proposal? Rafe Sonnenstein, Neighborhood Council Review Commission. Would it be possible for us to ask for some of the language that Karen just said to be somewhere in the ordinance? Because our commission had a huge discussion about the initial election procedures because there had been such a working relationship with the neighborhood councils in creating them. So, I think some of the sticker shock people are experiencing is seeing the words repeal, but what Karen just said is actually very reassuring, that we're not inconsistent with current needs. The existing election procedures would still be blah, blah, blah. I'm not a lawyer, blah, blah, blah. And could it say something like, "The city clerk shall promulgate these regulations with consultation, not veto." I don't mean veto, but with consultation with the neighborhood council. I think those two changes would go a long way to alleviating some of the concerns you're hearing in the community.
Yeah, I think that's something that we can do, and we're gonna be using this as a, as a learning experience in this coming year, too. So, this, this is not gonna go into effect until 2009.
Before you volunteer, this matter is going to council tomorrow. So, if there's an amendment that would be proposed, it would have to be...
Right. You know, it's up to the council members. I, quite frankly, just don't see any need to have that in the ordinance. But you're right, you have to assume that the city clerk is going to take the direction of the city council.
Frankly, it's superfluous language. I don't know that we absolutely need it, but if it's gonna make people feel better, hey...
I mean, we can, we can reassure you.
I'll tell you, if the city clerk would work with the city attorney and Mr. Sonnenstein, if you would volunteer to participate in a discussion that, that might provide additional language, I'd be happy to consider an amendment, but, but we're gonna send this forward as...
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna also add, if, even if this went forward as is, if there's something that needed to be, you know, we, we need to look at later on, it's something that could be modified later if there was a need to, but...
Right. But if you can come up with something by tomorrow, I'm happy to, I mean, we can amend it tomorrow, right?
We can.
Yeah, so if we can come up with something, we'll do it. If not, we'll, we'll consider it later.
Okay.
I'm happy to say that as...
You could probably do a verbal amendment, if...
Right, exactly. So, however, but with that, that, that item is approved. Item number three.
Item number three is consideration of recommendation Number 66 of the Neighborhood Council Review Commission and CLA reports concerning each neighborhood council continuing to receive equal annual funding. Since 2002, the city council has annually appropriated $50,000 to each neighborhood council. The funds have been for internal neighborhood council needs as well as neighborhood operations, outreach, and community improvement projects. The amount of funding provided by neighborhood councils is determined during the city's annual budget process. Prior contributions to neighborhood councils will be balanced against present city financial I believe you want to make an action, council member.
Yeah, and I'll ask Mr. Zine to consider amending this motion to, that the, the funding requirement would be contingent upon certain requirements. Number one, that the neighborhood councils produce an annual neighborhood council report as defined by Dunn. The neighborhood councils host a minimum of one town hall-style meeting to provide stakeholders with input on neighborhood budget priorities. That would be number two. Number three, neighborhood councils establish neighborhood budget priorities. And number four, neighborhood councils host a town hall-style meeting when a 5% adjustment is made to a budget item to provide for stakeholder input. Would you have any problems with those amendments?
Town hall budget priorities? No. The concern I have with the, some of the expenditures I've seen, when I look at neighborhood operations, outreach, community improvement projects, when I look at some of the expenditures, I question how it falls into the benefit of the community. But I've seen things where books are purchased for a school. I think that's LAUSD's responsibility, not dollars that should go into some kind of community enhancement, community betterment, or a scholarship for schools. I think somehow, some other guidelines, when I, when I look at that contribution to the neighborhood council, it's for the betterment of the community at large, whether beautification of the parkway, maybe sidewalk repair, something that's tangible. What troubles me is when I see those dollars going into support school programs when LA Unified has billions of dollars for school program. I don't understand why neighborhood councils are using their money to do what the schools are supposed to be doing when there's needs in the community.
Well, but I would...
I don't, I don't want to...
I would counter, I would counter that the city council often gives money to LAUSD.
Not to buy books.
Buses.
We give buses to a lot of people. Each of us has a budget for that, and we give it to senior citizens, we give it to schools. I just think that... it to senior citizens. We give it to schools. I just think that the money that goes to neighborhood council should be used to tangible betterment of the overall community. That's always been my view. If it helps support a bid, which helps the commercial district. It just troubles me that if they're doing a scholarship for a school, that one school benefits, that student benefits, the rest of the community doesn't benefit from it.
The...
I'm not picking on LAUSD. I'm just saying, I'm looking at $50,000 to go into something substantial for a community. That's the concern I have. And the annual report, I like the town hall meeting. I like the budget priorities. But there's a number of neighborhood councils that have a surplus of money, and they may even save it up for something, and after hundreds of thousand, it's swept.
The review commission's recommendation is simply that they shall receive equal funding. It doesn't go into what the money is spent on.
Are there guidelines for that? Are there guidelines for the...
What I've done is, I've provided these four requirements for them to receive the money.
Other... Because I know some will save it for certain projects, and I understand that. But are there any guidelines? I'll give you an example. One neighborhood council, to help a nonprofit, went out and bought a $3,000 television set to give as a door prize for an auction. Is the neighborhood council supposed to spend $3,000, or neighborhood council money, to buy a television set for a nonprofit that's doing a fundraiser? I thought that was a misappropriation. I don't know if they ever got the money or not, but it seems that there's no real guidelines. I know when we spend money, there's specific guidelines how we can spend money. And it seems that while we don't want to restrict them, somehow, sometimes they get carried away. And a $3,000 television set for a nonprofit, I think creates a problem.
Bang Wan Ken, General Manager, Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. I think it is true that specific guidelines for funding has been unclear, other than the three categories. To give you a little history, I think the original purpose for providing funding to neighborhood councils was recognizing that these were volunteer initiatives, and that they needed budgetary support to help them with administrative costs. That was a large part of the original intent of the funding. So, I think this is another look, a careful look at the funding situation, and I support... What I would like to work with neighborhood councils to do is get them to look at developing annual plans for their community, and then to see how funding would support their annual plans. It's hard to go to a neighborhood council and say, "How do you want to spend your money?" without a larger context for what the community plan should say. So, I would try to link the community plan. I'm supportive of a town hall model, because I think the neighborhood council's primary role is around participatory democracy. But the controller's audit also talked about developing performance-based budgets for neighborhood councils. So, there are a variety of policy recommendations that are calling for neighborhood councils to look at more effectively using their public funds.
And I know that the practice in the past has been $50,000, but with the budget that we're facing, the shortfall, I can see that $50,000 being reduced. We're talking about, we've been asked to give cars back and do whatever we can to help shore up the budget. I can see that being reduced to a lower number, and if that's the case, then it would be reduced proportionally, and not one, we see this, one, we see that, but whatever it's reduced to. I can't see, with the budgetary problems we're facing, to keep it at that level. But I understand it should be fair across the board, but at the same time, I've got concerns about, as you say, some kind of a plan. What are you going to spend it on? Versus, here's the money, now go out and do it. Well, tell me what you want to do, and then how that fits in the picture. I think that's a good way to go.
Can we stop that kind of purchase? I mean...
Well, oftentimes, Dunn will seek our advice, and we'll advise Dunn as the appropriate procedures. If it's a misuse of public funds, our advice would be that that money cannot be reimbursed to the neighborhood council, and there may be situations where a board member may have donated money that he never intended to.
But a $3,000 expenditure, assuming that they could argue that it was for the benefit of the community at this nonprofit for a specific purpose, it's pretty hard to say no, unless it were like, one of the board members owned the Best Buy and worked with the, what was on the board of the nonprofit, or...
Well, under the categories of neighborhood councils, I mean, donating a TV for a raffle, I don't think falls in that category, quite frankly. So, we work with neighborhood councils on that. Oftentimes, they call our office, and they ask us. I mean, the funding program does identify, as Mr. Kim indicated, the parameters.
No, it wasn't a 19-inch, 1990 model, was it?
It was new. And there was another issue. There was another issue where a neighborhood council, one of the members of the board, had a website company, and he was doing websites, .com, .net, .this, .that, for this particular neighborhood council. Then he wanted to charge for that. Well, he's benefiting personally. He owns the company. Well, it benefits neighborhood council. No, it's benefiting you. So, I mean, that was another issue, where they spent the money...
That's clearly an ethics issue.
Right. And again, that relates to conflict of interest issues. We get involved with those. We assist neighborhood councils in evaluating whatever appropriate deals that can be made, and which ones are not.
I mean, you've got the headache on your hands. All we're trying to do is set some guidelines, so maybe relieve some of those headaches that kind of bond. Because I thought the TV was out of line, personally. I just didn't think that it was designed to spend that kind of money on a nonprofit, because if you do it on that nonprofit, how are you going to tell the next 10 nonprofits, "We're not going to do it for you"?
There are some examples of neighborhood councils getting creative with their funds, and we examine every transaction, and we flag those that we feel are not appropriate use of public funds. So, there are some instances where neighborhood councils go ahead and spend their own money, and then ask for reimbursement. And it's the TV purchase. I do recall one coming online, and we didn't allow that. But they did that and didn't ask us ahead of time. We're telling them, "Ask us in advance, and we'll advise you, but don't make the purchase, and ask permission after the fact."
And actually, the spirit of the recommendations are to shed more light on what the priorities are for the budget. That's why, that's why I...
Well, I like to, you know, everyone's got to have some guidance, some guidelines.
So, Mr. Zine moves the recommendation number 66 with the amendments...
Amendments, the four amendments.
The four amendments that I stated, and I support that. Oh, we do have some public comment cards. Mr. McQuiston.
Jim McQuiston, I have a statement that you all have. Actually, we got into this because when neighborhood councils started up, they needed a lot of equipment, too. And the city said, "Well, we'll finance some of the equipment, too, and that costs money, so we'll set a large number." And I personally testified that the number didn't matter, because neighborhood councils weren't going to go out and spend city money unwisely, and they haven't. There are some, which Councilmember Zine has adequately shown, and I have overheard some conversations where they're right on the borderline, or maybe have to really heavily justify. However, we do have a grant program, and if someone wanted to spend money like that, we should be going through the grant program, rather than giving them arbitrarily some money and saying, "Okay, you've got all your equipment now. You don't really have a need for this much money, but the ordinance says you have to have the $50,000," even though the Human Relations Commission is going to be docked so much, they can't print their reports anymore. Now, that, to me, is just totally wrong. So, we've got to modify that ordinance, so that it's not automatic that they're getting the $50,000. And we have to find out exactly how much we think maintenance of a neighborhood council is costing them. And that probably is going to be an equal amount. So, the bottom line is, neighborhood councils should have an equal amount of money, but they should not have the money that they're spending on grants unless they grant, write a grant request. And that way, we can control the city budget, and the Human Relations Commission will be able to put out their reports. Otherwise, they won't be.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Weiss?
Can you run up here faster? You're at a full sprint.
I am. Congratulations, by the way, Councilmember, Mr. Alakon. It's wonderful.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. In response to your comment, I mean, LAUSD, and I want to tie this into a specific, LAUSD is inherently ungovernable. It only took those new, vigorous...
Really?
...young rebels. It only took them six or seven or eight months before they get co-opted by the bureaucracy. And the specific that I'm talking about, Jack Dawson and I had a conversation...
The motion...
Okay, well, the motion relates to, specifically relates to, use of the funds. And what prompts my comment is the fact that LAUSD is now going to charge these youth groups.
Actually, the motion is not regarding...
Well, it does, but the alternative...
It's only about distribution.
Well, but...
School distribution, that's all it's...
Okay, well, the alternative comments from the CLA says, "Alternatively, neighborhood councils should be required to submit an annual report on neighborhood schools, report on the neighborhood's unique features, and on the neighborhood's needs for services, service plan, and receiving annual funding." That's an alternative from the CLA's office. And what I'm saying to you is that relative to, when you have these such situations where we're talking about a community need, a Clear That Valley Youth Conference is going to go out of business because of what LAUSD is doing. Now, who's to say? Why shouldn't, and this impacts obviously your district, too, Councilmember Alakon, we're in a situation where, why shouldn't neighborhood councils? It would be a logical draw. You've got people who are excited. They're volunteers. You can draw people into the neighborhood council. You could have an opportunity to be able to have, again, what I want, again, I kind of go back to my memorandum of understanding a little bit, but this kind of does relate, if we're talking about funding, and we're talking about the use of funding and a check on funding, subject to perhaps city council approval, that sort of thing. Because these situations come up, and clearly, there's a clear community need here, because if the Valley Youth Conference goes out of business, and neighborhood councils could be in a position to try to help, again, with the appropriate input, I don't see any reason why we can't provide for some mechanism and structure that would allow for that. And whether it's a budgeting, or, again, subject to the approval of the city council, something along those lines. So, I think it would relate. That's the tie-in.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I understand.
Okay, Mr. Zine moves the staff report with the recommendations that I mentioned, and I approve that matter. Move forward to council. Item number four.
Item number four is to continue consideration of recommendation number 10 of the Neighborhood Council Review Commission and CLA reports regarding revisions and additions to the processing of community impact statements. On January 22, 2008, the committee continued this matter and instructed the city clerk with the CLA and council District 15 staff and members of the NCRC to report back on this matter.
We're going to lose our quorum, but I will work to send these matters to council. Okay, so, on this one, Mr. Zine moves?
Yes.
Okay. With that, Mr. McQuiston, did you have, did you have some comments?
Thank you.
Mr. McQuiston, public comment? Item number four.
Jim McQuiston, this also is tied up, of course, with the council file controversy, you might say. The difficulty with all these community impact statements is, are they authentic of the community? We have no way of finding that out. There's nothing in the community impact statement that says that they really went out to the community and found out what the community wants, and whether or not the council was unanimous, or badly divided, or anything else. And so, it's not much of a help. And also, we've had testimony that council people don't really read those community impact statements, so there is a question of what use they are. But I am concerned about setting up two classes of people. One class is exercising their full First Amendment rights, and the other class is being restricted. And that is something which I, as a civil rights lawyer, am very, very disturbed about. I am also disturbed, as you read my statement, that these people are not coming down and convincing people before the action is being taken. And it's not fair to people to just come to a hearing and say, "Hey, you just did it all wrong. You should do it over." I think there has to be better coordination, better cooperation between neighborhood councils and departments and the city council staff, so that people are more informed. Now, I heard Mr. White's chief deputy once saying, "She reads everything that comes across her desk." Good for her, because she said that Cindy Miskowski taught her that, and she was very, very glad to do so. But there's a lot of stuff to read, and you really don't know whether or not you're getting the straight dope. And council file reports and council file generation just makes it more difficult for people to know what's going on, if you don't really have a face-to-face conversation and a negotiation. And that's really what we want out of neighborhood councils, people coming down and talking to people before decisions have to be made.
Okay. We certainly don't want to trample on anybody's civil rights. On the other hand, we cannot allow bureaucracy to crush our democracy. And this, not to sound so grandiose about it, but in fact, this is a measure to, that I think is a good way to place information in the council agendas, pragmatically speaking, without making it impossible to do agendas that make any sense. And so, I support Mr. Zine's motion to move the CLA's recommendation and to adopt the city clerk's report, and move the item to council.
Item number five is consideration of motion Hong Gruel, a requirement that the Neighborhood Council Review Commission to discuss the requirement that all neighborhood council board members be given training on sexual harassment at regular intervals.
Where is that? Court?
Is that item number five?
Item number five, supplemental page.
We have one card on this. Leonard Schaefer?
Yeah. The CLA's office is recommending that Dunn be instructed to submit to the committee a report on how they would provide sexual harassment training to neighborhood council board members.
Really quick comment, as to whether this should be, or money should be expended to make this a standalone. I know the city attorney's office puts on some very good meetings, where they train in things like Brown Act and such as that. And my only thought would be, if you were going to have sexual harassment training, that would be a very, very good place to have it, so that you wouldn't be expending extra funds on individual meetings. That's my only, my only real thought on it. Could it be done in some other arena?
The recommendation on this item is merely to ask Dunn to prepare a report to this committee back in 45 days on how they would provide sexual harassment training to neighborhood council board members, on the theory that, or on the advice of the city attorney, that we could theoretically be liable for certain kinds of sexual harassment incidents that might occur in the neighborhood council process. That's fine with me, and I think prudent. But I don't, but as to what exactly we're directing Dunn to do...
Bang Wan Ken, Dunn.
...to the sexual harassment policy, I don't have any. There's no other recommendation. So, my intent is to direct the chair of this committee, Dunn, to report back in 45 days.
I can make a suggestion to the department. The city does have citywide online training, and perhaps Dunn can discuss that with the personnel department, see if that can be made available to neighborhood councils.
We could provide a report back and find out what resources would be available to provide the training, but for Dunn to provide the training would not be possible directly. If the available resources were available somewhere within the city, and it's just a matter of Dunn making the arrangements to allow neighborhood council board members to receive that kind of training, that may be possible.
Okay. So, you might be able to provide policies?
Or direct them to, for example, as Gwen was suggesting, if the online training that city personnel are required to take, if we could make that accessible to neighborhood council board members, that would be one feasible way of doing it. But to provide sexual harassment training to 1,800 board members in one year requires a significant amount of re...
a significant amount of resources to do.
That's not what the motion, the motion says, if you, if you did do it, how would you do it? We're not asking whether you have an opinion about whether you should or not. We're simply saying to report back on how you would provide sexual harassment training to neighborhood council board members.
Right.
So if the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment was going to do it, provide us with that budget. If you're going to recommend that they get it online, provide us with that information.
Understood.
If you have some other source, provide us with that information. We're not taking action on anything.
Yeah.
We're just, we just, I think, I think it's prudent to get that information.
Okay.
Eric Sanho, Councilwoman Hanzoff, is just a quick suggestion. Perhaps it could be incorporated in the new board member training, which has like a packet about that big, full of information. I think that would be one option to reach all the board members, and then it could be offered, case-by-case basis, for neighborhood councils who feel they need the extra training. For example, the city attorney has a unit with Replace Violence that has done some trainings upon request of neighborhood councils. It could be treated the same way, where you'd find staff that'd be available to do it, and they would do it on a case-by-case basis when it's requested.
Any and all suggestions would be welcome. When I was in the legislature, we used to get sexual harassment training incorporated into our ethics training. And, of course, there weren't 1,800 people. But, so there's probably other ways to... At least provide information, or at least information on how to, how to complain about it.
We'll do that.
Thank you. So we'll, I guess I can direct as chair of the committee for the department to do that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Ooh, the power. Item number six?
Item number six is consideration of a motion by Labanj Han regarding each neighborhood council identifying within its board or stakeholders a liaison to serve as a point of contact to city and other governmental agencies and nonprofit...
Well, I'm sorry, I neglected to get comments from Mr. Schaefer on item number five. Okay, thank you. Good answer. Item number six.
Is consideration of a motion regarding each neighborhood council identifying within its board or stakeholders a liaison to serve as a point of contact to city and other governmental agencies and nonprofit organizations and other, and other related matters.
The commission? Did Mr. Sanshai leave?
Yes, he left.
Oh, it's the youth commi... Okay.
It's the council and CCYF.
Oh, that's why you're here? Come on, come on down.
Good afternoon, councilmember. Rafael Lopez, Executive Director of the Commission for Children, Youth, and Their Families. I actually will make this really easy for you, because this particular motion dated August 10, 2005, cites a particular grant and program which expired in 2007. And so ultimately, the Safe Corridors Program was granted by the Office of Traffic Safety, executed by CCYF, implemented over 100 elementary schools, and no longer exists in its old form. So there's nothing else new to report on this particular item. And neighborhood councils had the choice of designating a representative from their neighborhood council board of directors to the various schools in which we were operating. And that program is now in a very different iteration in almost 200 elementary schools across the LA Unified School District. So there's actually nothing new, or necessary. I brought Jamiko Bell, Director of Community partnerships, in case there were any additional questions about what we're doing for the future.
So you would concur with the recommendation to note and file this item?
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
One public comment card, Mr. McQuiston? I'm sorry, we have two. Mr. McQuiston and Leonard Schaefer?
Jim McQuiston, as it was said, I was the only representative from a neighborhood council who actually participated in that program. It was a very good program. We really hit it hard in our particular area, and I'm very glad that the CCYF had that program. I am disappointed that other neighborhood councils did not participate. And I certainly hope that they do, because this is something that should be here. One difficulty that I have with CCYF, and that is, I believe CCYF ought to be in this particular committee, because it's the neighborhood committee. And instead, it's in Tom Labanj's committee, which is really Arts and Parks. And I think that that was a big mistake. I think it should be in this committee.
No comment. Yes, Mr. Schaefer?
For item six.
Six.
Again, Leonard Schaefer, brief comment. The NCRC, when we were discussing roles and considering roles, one of the roles we thought should be assigned to Dunn, the new Dunn, was outreach. And looking at this particular motion, I think that, as opposed to asking a neighborhood council member to go out and try and find the contacts, discover what CBOs there are within its area, or very close to its area, I think it would be better if Dunn, in its new role of outreach, were to help arrange this type of thing, and to bring those CBOs in small meetings to one, two, maybe three neighborhood councils in a region, so that we would have the ability to meet the contact people, rather than trying to find some volunteer who would expend the amount of time that would be necessary to make all those contacts.
No, I think that extends far beyond just nonprofit groups. Just, they should be a convener for interested parties for the neighborhood councils. That's a good idea, yeah. And if they're not doing the elections, maybe they can do some of that.
Well, they're not going to be doing the elections.
Okay, so that matter will be noted, it's been filed. I can, before we go to the public comment period, just let me mention that we have gone through 73 items of the recommendations of the Board of Review Commissioners, and that's not to say we've completed them, because many of them have generated reports that will be coming back to this committee, but that was our commitment, we, and I want to thank staff, and for helping us get there. Of course, Department of Neighborhood Empowerment, and the, Mr. Sanshai in particular, and the commission as a whole. And I think, I think we've done okay with the process, so when we get those other reports, we'll act on those items as they come back. But with that, I'd like to go to public comment period, Mr. Weisman, and then Mr. Weiss.
Councilmember, you thought you'd get it done by the end of March, you did it before the end of February.
Pardon me?
You thought you'd have it done by the end of March, but you did it before the end of February.
You thought I said the end of March?
I thought that's what you said.
No, I thought you said the end of February.
Oh, you did, okay.
Well, you accomplished your objective, congratulations, that's awesome.
We did it, then.
That's right, you did it.
Good job.
Good job.
The one thing that I did want to bring out, I mean, I talked to Rafe about it, talked to the powers that be, this idea about neighborhood councils being able to enter into memorandum of understanding, and just that short little language, everybody seemed to like it. I'm just hoping it doesn't get lost in the shuffle. Eric said that at some point, you know, maybe Janice would do something, but I just wanted to throw that on the table, because I don't want to, I think it really is important, particularly...
On an informal basis, with all the council members.
Yeah, exactly, right. All the ghosts here, except for you. And the real live body. So anyway, pli... But the second thing, the second thing...
I feel like Rodney Dangerfield.
No, you don't, not at all. You're much more handsome than Rodger Dangerfield.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I know, I know, that's what I mean. The situation, it took me a couple of months, and it wasn't just me, but Tony Kardnis took his anti, he took the Gang Task Force on the road. He went to Watts, he went to some of these other areas. I want to, Councilman Manarcon, I want to re-suggest that idea for you, because again, now I think you could draw a huge crowd, particularly in terms of what's going on relative to these community-based issues, particularly in the valley, where it impacts your people, it impacts Dennis's people. And the other thing is, I, I mean, you'll get a huge draw on this kind of participation question, and again, just to kind of let them know. The other thing, your education, Department of Education motion, we talked about that last year, and I just wanted to, I mean, I know we had all this stuff here, and Daryl and I actually have the occasion to talk about it. I just want to kind of keep it going, because honestly, LAUSD really is ungovernable, and what the mayor's doing, I'm not sure is really legal, anyway. And regardless of, regardless of what the, because it's exclusive council, it's just an AB 1381, it's just in a different form, and it's really problematic, particularly with the budgetary funding and everything else. Whichever way you guys want, and gals want to go with it, great, but I think you're really doing a great public service if you can bring forth your motion, and we can have and hear a public debate, because I think there's some alternatives that can and should be debated, and we can really use the current crisis situation to build a good, strong foundation, I think, for city public charter schools, at least as an item of debate and consideration. Thank you very much.
With that, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.